We'll call to order this August 9th, my thanks to town helpful meeting. Girl, please rise to the table, be with all that in the moment.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. On our mission, our God, individual liberty and justice for all.
While we seated. Proportions and presentations, we have none. So we'll move on to item five, which is public conditions, communications and public participation on any subject jurisdiction of the town council. With a two minute limit, if you're on the zoom app, you can hit raise my hand function or star nine. Or if you're in the public, you can approach the table and say your name and address for the record. Right, no one wants. Go on twice. All right, we'll move on to item six, public hearings, there are none. Seven A reports and boards of community responsible council. We have none tonight, also Murray is away, so there's nothing for Rich Row. So seven B is report of town council liaisons and all start right to left, so council meeting.
So Johnny and I met at mental health test course on August 1st. His name was Johnny, talked, he came out and talked about kids using the video and internet or video and internet infection. So that was basically what that meeting was about and it was really interesting. Do you have anything to add to that, John?
No, I would just recommend that. It's screen addiction for kids. Presentation that that he did that was very informative, so I would recommend going to look at that video. And I think I think you might find some value there.
It could be on the the website now.
I think it's on the website.
It should be to the recorded media.
Yes, it'll be on CVC channel, probably.
Or the town site.
Yeah.
No, I think the town. But yeah, it was very informative. On the corner here and then Lisa, four of us, Lisa, Brian, myself and Tammy met to discuss mostly what's on the agenda later this evening. All the upper information, there's a few things that didn't go ahead for various reasons. One was a public pork truck because it's a year two in capital budget, so we figured we'd hold off on that. And the test court didn't make it either because of.
Even the state grant, you can't offset it for another grant. And we're trying to use that those funds as the town share of the state.
And then the last thing is on hold is recreation, using some up to $300,000. Trying to be a way to get the community more involved with recreation activities and Bruce asked to find out more information. So that's gonna be at the special meeting, we're gonna have. August 31st. That's what I have. Do you guys have anything to add, so Brian or Tammy?
I would just say, you know. Where the people were on the task force were really looking for the best usage of this money. Some of these things people may question why we're doing this, why we're not doing that. But what they're really trying to bring forward is anything that's gonna have positive impact from a tax perspective to the to the residents. So if it's something that we're gonna incur debt on, we're trying to take that into consideration to say, can we pay for it with our funding? And then. Been a little crazy about the the recreation thing because I think. You know, we were talking about street addiction app, we've just seen such a negative impact, not only for children, but also for our seniors and stuff like that. And looking for a way to get the ref department fully back to fully funded and also increase the amount of activity that we're seeing. Whether it be from kids or creating programming for seniors and stuff like that, just trying to use that money to offset the bills of COVID. So we need for a long time, we discuss all this stuff really in detail to decide what to bring forward and what not to bring forward and what to wait on. So tonight we'll go over all them and I hope you guys.
Yeah, we're gonna have some committee finally. Yeah, I think we've established what we're tasked with. Then last night, the advisory, we met last night, Bruce Watt gave a lot of information, facility updates. And summer camp's going well, members of the mountain club came to discuss the possible funding of a shade structure over Krambleford. Watching the great idea, discuss celebrate talent, which is September 10th. And also the ego scope project that's happened. Over where is it? At the gazebo, right, the gazebo live club field.
Yes.
Yeah, so yeah, a lot going on in the recreation department, too. I love you, Scott.
Thank you, Councilman Gudichak, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that the planning and zoning met last night and that they actually brought forward a solid proposal. Mr. Foley was there as well regarding the. Affordable housing trust fund where it was some very promising developments. I think that they have some very solid plans and solid P structures that. Although my, you know, I still have concerns regarding the fees and other costs and the potential negative impacts they may have on the. On businesses overall, but I think it's something that is worthwhile and it's a good starting point. I asked them to push it forward through their to their board, to a Mr. Foley, so that he could present it to us. For review prior to our next, prior to our meeting with the with the planning and zoning commission. To discuss this and hopefully finalize it. So there was a, that was a solid development, there was no more discussion regarding the signs, at least that I heard last night. And that there was a few other, a few other issues that were discussed, but the largest one, I think. Correctly from my story that was was directed towards the affordable housing cost market.
Yeah.
Then the, as far as veterans recognition commission, that there's been a lot of discussions and a lot of things going on. Although they did not have a full formal meeting recently because of summer, summer Brady. That they did, they were attending at all their first coffee house this morning. Over at the congregation church crossway. I was not able to attend, so I can't speak as far as how successful it was. But that there was a lot of other discussion that we had regarding the establishment of. Or at least the fund that we could use for that would be that we use not just for the building of a veteran more wall. Or renovations towards it, but also other funds that we could use, that they could use for the different activities. So they can a fundraising source and I appreciate that we're helping us out a lot. Lisa and everybody was very helpful in in getting us in a positive direction on that. And that's all, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
So we have the ARPA meeting, which we'll go over all that stuff in detail later, but I, we also had, I'm super excited for the PCC stuff. Like we're in full out blown out planning mode for the harvest fest. We're gonna have food trucks, we're gonna have like the whole thing is expanding to what we had originally thought about a few years ago. The date is set, we're gonna have the scarecrows, we're still gonna have the meet and greet with the town, stuff like that. We're talking about having music at both ends of the green. We are looking at engaging with all kinds of food trucks and stuff like that to just close off the green and blow it out. So I'm super stoked for that, so planning, it's, I think it's the. I think it's October, let me tell you, it is. If I remember correctly, it is October 15th and it's going to be a pretty much all day event, at least like 12 to 6. So hold on, planning mode for that right now.
Well, permit sit on my desk for that.
There's not those permits, those are good permits.
This is a beer shop thing I wanna look into.
Leave the beer cup on. Yes, so we're looking at really trying to get a bunch of food, a bunch of different kinds of food trucks there. And then Tommy football sold food last year, having that and all kinds of good things, so super excited.
No, it's great and also good that Bullock's AK is here, because I can already see he's probably rolling through a certain activation to be here for big to bad for. They requested, sir.
And you know, last night I know Kevin and them were there last year, they were walking around and all of that, too. So that they all seemed kind of into it.
Thank you. I have no past games report, but tomorrow night will be word of Adam covering for August. So they're meeting this Wednesday, I believe next Thursday, the 18th. Conservation as a meeting this Thursday, we're gonna be applying for an Audubon grants. And then on the 15th, the water issue, so that's it for me.
Councilor Shepard coming to House of Sports, so I have nothing for that.
Okay. Councilor Cal.
Last one is we met with the EDC and talked about housing. Local business had to put it out there because there's a lot of space in town and nobody out to check. New businesses, new businesses and so far they've been talking about it left and right. And I did ask them, I said, we've been talking about this for about six, three months, but are we, are we getting anywhere? So they're just directing the empty spaces and everything else, but beside that. They are going in circle, that's what I think.
Thank you. Right, so that puts to eight, which before we start, there was kind of a flurry of email that John and I received about adding an item to the new business. Section which is eight twenty-five, there was a printout provided to everyone in the email that I believe. I don't know, Brian and Lisa, if you wanna kind of explain that before we we vote to add that to the agenda, right, because if you do that, it's a common area.
The. Yeah, for the agenda this evening has to do with potential bond refunding. In September, we will be issuing debt, we'll be issuing some notes, we'll be issuing some bonds. And we're looking at different things for different categories on how they have to be issued. Along with that, we have an opportunity for savings of around 209,000 right now. By refunding some bonds that are out there, which will, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it does meet our. Our requirements for our debt management policy for if we were to do a refunding. So it's an opportunity to save and since we are issuing debt already, excuse me. It would be an opportunity because we wouldn't have as much issuance cost had we tried to do it by itself, it wouldn't have been worthwhile. So what we're asking tonight is for you to add to the agenda, the items so that we can set the public hearing for the next meeting in August. Because the bond sale is November, September 15th, so it's kind of fast track. We just came about this refunding when we started looking at things for the sale. And we're trying to fast track it to get it so that we can do the process. So we're asking if you could add that this tonight and we can have the bond advisor, financial advisor here for the public hearing. For more questions and certainly I can answer more if you need.
And just grab, I mean, it was, like you said, the first meeting is kind of gonna be very tight, so we're trying to get this done. For this meeting to set the public hearing, if you have more deliberation discussions.
Right.
What things have the hearing.
And we also have a, we're gonna have to go to the rating agencies. Brian and I and maybe David, by David Corpren. And so to have this in place for the official statement that has to be issued and everything else. We'd like to have it in place for when we go to the rating agency, which would be later this month. And if you do decide to add this, I'd request that you do a roll call though, just so it's all documented that you approved it.
Okay. There any further discussion? I entertain a motion to add agenda item eight point five to new business. So there's a second, thank you. All right. See no further discussion. We'll do, I think, as. We've been trying to go by first. Yeah, we'll do, I think, as Lisa wisely suggested is a roll call votes, I'll go right to left, Councilman Gudichak.
Hi.
Councilor Luba.
Hi.
Councilor Gudichak.
Hi.
legislature again.
Hi.
Councilor Cal.
And I'm at ISO TMS, so it's added on to eight point five.
But that will bring us back up to eight point one, which is a discussion on potential changes to firehouse plans. And I know we have Chief White Bell here, I believe we have Chuck, we have Chuck Eaton from CHA, who's Hancock. I guess the whole, the whole team, it was, we got the whole team here, so. I'll pass it over to you, Ryan, I know you created a very thorough timeline and a lot of documentation for us to review and certainly those some questions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, staff created this timeline, as much of it was saddled upon me five weeks ago when I got here. But suffice to say. A few years ago, it was decided that we were gonna build three new firehouses, it went to referendum for $500,000. I'm sorry, five million and and. It moved forward and this was done at the previous town manager, previous. To Lisa being here. When I got here, the, since that time, COVID happened, supply chain happened, inflation happened. And everything has gone up and as we began to approach and push the project forward, as we had had a bid for the for the two firehouses. We realized we were likely going to be well over budget with the two firehouses and it was gonna cost the town a lot more. Moreover, we found a problem with the low bidder in the, again, through due diligence. We found a problem with the low bidder's material certifications to get it done and it began to shine a light on other problems with the developer. That being said, I decided to pump the brakes on the whole process. The last thing I wanted to do would be to. Get engaged in this further, have it be haphazard, it was an overly ambitious project to begin with. I will say with some confidence and I'll elaborate on it if necessary, that had I have been the town manager when this came up, I certainly would. Been for the rebuilding three firehouses by any stretch. So we are, where we are now is we have sent one firehouse out for bid. It has come in around just under 2.2 million prior to us adding the 20% contingency. As we expect, you know, things are gonna be a lot more expensive. With that, we'd like to consider after that putting the Plains Road Firehouse out to. An estimate for engineering for a refurbish. To repair the roof and add a bay and then after that, look to do the crumbling foundations of Firehouse 140 on Crystal Lake. And that's where we stand and you know, I understand the. Will be the impression that the public may not have confidence in the town to get a project like this off the ground and running. But the world has changed since it started. Certainly materials inflation and supply has drastically changed since it happened and we've needed to adjust. And I think we've done so responsibly. I understand that there is some. Need or some desire maybe to consider a building committee. I, if you tell us to do one, we will, I would, I would say that I don't think that would be of assistance. And if the fact that we, one, noted, noticed a problem with the bid and then two, had the sense to pump the brakes before we spent too much of the town's money and went over. I think that was sensible on our, on our end. And I'm willing to entertain any questions anyone has on this. And I have staff, should I need them, thank, thank you everybody around us.
Just wanna thank you guys all through the timeline, I think a lot of us assumed when it first was put forward that everything was kind of cut and dry. As soon as it was passed the referendum, I think we're going to go really fast. And I think this timeline does educate us and I hopefully the public a lot more on what was needed in terms of the wetlands, PBC. That there's, there are a lot more steps to really move this project forward than we anticipated. Understandably, there's still some frustration, I think this is probably a good framework for going forward. That as we find the next best steps for this project, it needs to be as transparent as possible for the council to be apprised of what the timeline can look like, what it should look like. What our expectations are and being able to relay that to our neighbors, because I think as we said at last meeting, I don't know how much we wanna. Rehash it all, but there's certainly that frustration that we've been having to refer them for this and then only getting this. So I just wanna make sure, obviously we should have questions, share our thoughts and feelings, but I hope we can move forward in the right direction for the firehouse projects. And I think ultimately, this is a good project that helps update long overdue fire stations to be safe, reliable, compliant for our public safety and our volunteers. So just wanna thank you guys all for that, I might have some questions eventually, but for now, I wanna open up to everyone else before I dig into any mine, so. Got you, Gudichak.
I was upset a couple of weeks ago and I first heard that I somewhere down, so I do ask, of course, appreciate the chief and that fire department. So what is, I like the idea of a subcommittee, I know some may not. It's similar to, I think, the subcommittee that we have going with ARPA committee, just a few of us. I do feel like. Say nicely that we weren't informed as much of the process of what was happening with the firehouses. It's not that I don't trust them, but I just feel as a council, we are responsible to let our residents know what's going on. If they have any questions, if somebody came up to me and asked me that. Very important, we need this, but I couldn't give them any solid information of what was actually happening until this timeline has come along. So I think I heard you say it's not a good idea and I just wanna know why.
I, I, I don't know what would have happened different had we have had a subcommittee.
I think the council would have.
Been better informed and communicated, I think maybe would have been. I, with our, with our, I think, yeah. Our staff did. When this came, one of the first things that came across my desk in here was looking at the developer, looking at the problem with the bid and making a decision. To cast that bid out and cast that developer out, looking further into this. Again, I just wanna pump the brakes before we go too fast and spend too much of the of the town's money beyond what we can handle here. I'm not sure, then there's staffing issues, I got Lynn right now and there's minutes and there's different issues that are gonna, layers that are gonna be additional work for staff. Should be formed committee, I believe. And so I, I, I don't know that it's necessary, but at the same time, council person, I'm happy to do it, you guys.
I just think it's different than what we talked about last week. And it's like you're okay with it, but regardless, I, you know, I firstly want to, or without firehouses. But I definitely want something to be communicated with that resident.
I think that's fair, I think we can do that and that, you know, a lot of it's gonna be the timeline that you hold in front of you cleaned up to some degree. And where we are moving forward, you know, with the bid that we threw out and then the bid that we have. And go from there, but I'm happy to, to, to do anything you guys direct.
Would it be safe to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And take on.
Oh, no, you have four.
Just my last one, but I know she's busy, needs to get up too, but. I was just gonna say, just, you know, was one of our council goals as well to have five, two firehouses completed by next November. Is that, do you still think that, do you think that will not happen?
By next November, the timeline, that wasn't, that's not gonna happen, correct? No, um. I don't think that's gonna happen.
Council.
Hopefully we would be signing our contract of the contract. But we would be going out to, but we haven't gone out to bid yet, but we would be going out to bid and then. If we get good bids, it's within the budget, we would probably start to execute a contract with the contractor and. Most likely start construction in February.
So one would start, yes.
That's for one fire.
Right. And what would they estimate, I'm sorry, Lou. Estimate completion of that one firehouse.
May. Almost a year from now and Chuck also is on.
Of all. He's on.
Yeah. How about you, dear?
Hey, hi, everyone, it's actually, it would be based on the current supply line issues that we have right now. It's, you know, we're estimating, you know, if they, if they start in February of next year, it would probably be, you know, spring of 2024. That it would, you know, have occupancy.
Okay.
Thank you, Gudichak, Councilwoman Luba.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I agree, I think that this, I had an opportunity to take a look at all the information provided us, including the CHA proposal and the layout. That being said, I, I still, I, I agree with the council, you to check, I would be looking for a public committee. And just for the main reason where it's not a matter of a lack of trust or a lack of anything, that everybody has done an outstanding job. Notified us as soon as something was, was that you notice something was amiss, that, so this is not a slight against anyone or showing a lack of faith of anyone. But I think especially being part of the Virgote Building Committee, there's a lot of things that by, with the building committee, it would give, I think it would give everybody more leeway. To be able to go forward and do certain things that rather than having to say, oh, we're gonna do this, we have to go back to the council to, to ask about this, if we could make this improvement over this or this. Or make these other changes, I think that the building committee actually gives you a little more freedom to do certain things, so long as the committee has that authority to go forward and operate within that budget. So and I just think that there's a lot of things where making sure that this is meeting specifications that, that, that the fire department chief lights out. Has the, had what they're looking for and that we're not just trying to do this on, you know, on a budget or on, you know, on a shoestring budget. That I think that there's things where if you can validate to the building committee that this is something that we really need and with the value added, that the committee would be able to say, yes. Let's go forward and operate within this budget, plus I think it's also something that needs to have further oversight on all the, all the operations, on anything. So I think that's not just a building committee for the firehouse, but for the entire fire project. I mean, again, this is not showing a lack of faith of anyone, questioning anyone's integrity, questioning anything about that, not thinking that our, that our town employees could do this. I have full faith and, and confidence that they could, but I think that this is something that as a town council, that we need to have appropriate oversight. And also allow the people that, the people that are benefiting from this to be able to go forward and make certain requests, to have certain things added or be able to replace certain things. Without the necessity of coming back or being questioned, why did you do this, why, you know, that provides full transparency, full coverage. And I think it's something that, that I would be requesting formally that we, that we incorporate as part of this project. Other than that, I think that the proposal is outstanding, I think that it's something that can be done. But I just would like to see this, see a committee overseeing it, just to make sure that we get not just what we, what we need, but what works well. Because what I don't want is to have us spending, you know, and God, you know, God forbid that I actually say that I wanna spend more money on anything. But I don't want us to say, we're gonna get this for 2.1 million, be stuck with that 2.1 million and then say for another 100,000 or 200,000, we could have gotten this much more. I think that that's something that, again, that building committee would give that oversight and be able to give that coverage, give that authority to say, yes, go forward and do it. Rather than somebody questioning, oh, well, why did, why did, you know, Ms. Foley, why didn't you do that, Chief lights out, why did you say that you need this? You know, or why didn't you do this? I think that's why, that that is why, seeing how the Virgote Building Committee worked, that's why I think that it would be appropriate. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Luba, are there any other comments from Councilors?
I'm going last, everybody else, talk away.
I was gonna say, I think. I like the idea of a committee, I'm wondering if it's possible to do something similar to the ARPA subcommittee where we have the chair, vice chair, the, the liaison or the members of that group. Or have it designated as a sign, so that if either of us can't fill, fulfill that role, which I would just say, all right, if we were to move forward in the subcommittee, I'd be interested in filling in one role. So if legislature again wanted to build the other role or if it doesn't need cover it, then we could have appropriate level representation for both sides to relay information to the caucuses as well as updates to the entire council and the public. That's just my few cents on that. But. Is there any others before we do it to Councilor Gudichak? legislature again.
I guess my question is from a process perspective, so the, the referendum that we approved, that's been. Set back, right, so that's done, that's not gonna happen. Those, are those, are those the funds we're talking about using or is, do we have to go back over?
I'm glad you said.
I'm okay over here.
Yes.
You have to think, yeah.
There, there's a number of different options that we can look. There, there's a number of different options that we can look at and it all depends on, on what route you take to move forward with this project. Obviously, there's not going to be sufficient funds on the five million referendum approval to do all three firehouses. So it all depends on how you decide to move forward with the other two stations. If there's enough to do two stations, then you will be able to use those funds out of that. We'll need to get our bond council involved just to change the scope of the original resolution, sort of very similar to what we did with the Birch Grove project. Where we ran into the issue with the unsuitable soils and the, the portables. There's a way to still keep the five million appropriation, you just changed the scope. And I haven't, when I spoke to you back before I left the town manager position, I hadn't talked about the potential of what was happening at that time. And we hadn't had all the bids all reviewed, we just knew where we were at. That was one of the things that I had mentioned that we would have to adjust the scope of the project. So we, when we're ready to do that, there's no rush to do it because the appropriation still covers the firehouses. So you can move forward with four forty, three forty, whichever one going forward. But when it comes time to pull out one or the other firehouses, then we need to move forward to do that. Now, with that said, looking at other options regarding the the potential of future projects, there's a number of ways to address that. Number one, I know we're on hold right now for a potential grant from the state of Connecticut. If we were to get that grant now, the only thing that would do for us is reduce the amount of debt that we have to issue. If that would be, because that's how the resolution is written. If you get any grants, it offsets the amount of debt that you issued from the project. So if that came in and it was used for that purpose, for that, the firehouses that we're currently working on, then that's what would happen with that. However, if you decided to take one station out of the project, have it as a separate project, we would have to see how much it costs depending on what the state grant is. We have to see what the, the delta is there and see how that fits into our town charter regarding future debt issuance. That could mean it falls under the 5% rule. It could mean it has to go to referendum depending on the dollar amount. Or it could mean, I'm not sure, and this is something that I would need our state representative to check into with the state, if, or, or maybe Brian has connections as well. If, if that state grant can be offset by ARPA funds. Whereas I know the state grant cannot, but if that state funding that is being that we may receive can be offset by our funds, that's another option. Rather than issuing debt or issuing maybe some ARPA funds, state grant and some additional debt. There's different things that we could look at, but we won't know until we know the exact project and where we're headed. In any event, I would say we need to be transparent with the public and explain exactly what would be going on. And not try to do anything, you know, just to kind of get it under the cusp or whatever. We could include it in a capital, future capital program as well. So, so those are your options right now. There's, there's several. And in response to you, Councilor Reagan, yes, it could mean having to go out for another referendum. Hopefully, it wouldn't have to get as far as that.
Okay, because the reason I asked that question was because I'm looking at the timeline, June 30th of 2022. Says the town exercises, the exercise of the right to reject all bids such as action is the best, if such suggestions are issued to the town, certified letters sent to all bidders and bid bonds are returned. So how does that play into what you just described? Because it seems to me that then, that means you're starting from ground zero again.
For the most part, we had to have our town engineer, Dr. Eaton, go through and try to give us some estimates to look at different alternatives. Because when we looked at the next lowest bidder, there wasn't sufficient funding with the $5 million to do the two firehouses at that point. So we were kind of stuck. So it was either look at, you know, what's the potential of at least getting one done? And possibly some ideas of refurbishments of the other ones or potential use towards another one in the future with additional funding. But until you get that first one done, it's kind of hard to figure out where the rest is going to be. But, you know, once you get your bids results in and you have your cushions for contingents, then you would see where we sit, the rest of the funds available. So yes, it would mean we're going to have to rebid and we're starting on that right away to rebid the next project out, but just for one at this point in time. And then we will go from there.
Very good. I think it'd be irresponsible. And I just want to put this out there to knock down Plains Road if we build a new firehouse there. I don't know if anyone here has walked around that building, walked inside or outside. And for perspective, I come from the land of 100-year-old firehouses. Five of the nine firehouses in Harvard were built before 1930. And they're active 24/7 firehouses. Five were built before 1940, several in the 1950s and 60s and one in 1989 being the newest one. Those covered major buildings, universities, schools. I look at Plains Road, I look at how much activity is there and I scratch my head that we are even, that we even considered building and knocking down a perfectly good firehouse. I looked at, at the staff bar at Birch, or at the, the fields over there is, is in worse shape than, than the firehouse. I mean, it's, it's confounding to me from where I came from and my background, that, that were, that, that was even considered. I'm sure most of our houses are all that. So John brought to me the idea of refurbishing it. I think that's a fine idea, putting another bay on it and repairing the roof. Looking at, at different types of activities, which houses are the busiest. I think that's the most responsible approach right now. New firehouse at, at Garing Road. Moving forward with that and then looking at the cost, the money is left over, how to spend it most responsibly at the Plains Road Firehouse. And, and, and I don't look to be cheap as in what, in regards to public safety, I have unfortunately been the part of budget cuts that meant lives were lost. And that's, that's when you cut budgets and where I come from, and, you know, murders and shootings go on. And I've been a part of that. I've had mothers shake their fist in my face. I say with complete confidence that if we don't build a new firehouse at Plains Road and we refurbish it, not a single life will be affected by that. And I have complete confidence in our public safety in our town to, to do that. And then we'll look at Crystal Lake after that.
I think that was partially a question I was going to ask either of Chuck or John, is in terms of Plains Road. I know it seems, do you think sense that, I mean, three forty, I like that topic, but three forty makes no sense, it's the oldest building. But is it also, and maybe the question wasn't done, does it have the highest volume of use out of the one, the three that we're working on? Perfectly put forward as part of the project.
So what ends up happening when station 440 is your farthest district?
Yeah.
So there's drivers out there, so in the middle of the night, it takes a fire truck or someone to get to the center of town, 28 minutes. So everyone end up doing something at the long haul for 30 minutes for someone to wait for it to show up. So when you have storm disasters, would you like to wait 45 minutes?
You know, I assume Garing Road is probably the more reasonable one to do, but I should probably clarify.
The staff fluctuates.
Yeah.
With volunteer. Station three was a very hot and heavy station that had almost had more high volume than the center of town station at nighttime to weekends. When we had additional staff before, we used to staff everything during the daytime. Once we get back up to bar, you'll have that. So you don't have such a large, delineated response times. But right now, because we're running such medical and everything else, but it's always been my goal in this community to put three ambulance in this community. And that's where that next ambulance would end up. So that makes sense?
It doesn't. So that's where the refurbishment to you that will.
Chuck can answer your question about the sensible decision of knocking it down versus building. We had looked at that. So Chuck would be the expert to answer that.
So I guess, yeah, Chuck, if you can kind of elaborate on that in terms of reverbing versus tearing down Plains Road, would that probably help meet a lot of public safety needs and still kind of address some key issues in that area?
So are you, you're, so you're asking Plains Road versus Garing Road?
Yeah, but my initial question was what, what was the rationale behind Garing over, over Plains being the first one to really work on? But then also, what are the benefits of refurbishing Plains Road rather than replacing it? And waiting possibly longer or doing a new referendum to just completely replace it?
Okay, so Garing is in, is older and it's in much worse condition than Plains Road. So that's, that's really the, the main reason for looking at reconstructing Garing over, over Plains. The, the benefit of rehabbing Plains Road as opposed to raising it and reconstructing it is that you can, you can bite off small pieces of the apple. You know, so we can, we can do the roof and then we can add a bay or, you know, whatever. Whatever is prioritized as the highest need there. And you can do that as funds allow. So whereas if you, if you raise it and reconstruct it, you, you have to put all that money out upfront in one project.
Okay. And then in addition to Plains Road, obviously, we kind of knew that when you're going to tear down, rebuild it originally, that there was enough space for it to actually be rebuilt. Would the refurb make much of a difference in terms of what style? You know, would it, I, I, I would be concerned if it ended up, you're going to do like a mortgage style addition and it looks lopsided versus are we going to get room for re, you know, refurbishing, would it be consistent with the architectural design of the way Plains Road is right now?
Well, obviously, anything, anything that gets put together would be architecturally similar. We, the, the issue with Plains Road is, is, is if you're going to add living space to it, you know, the way the building is positioned right now, between the property lines and the septic system, it's, it makes it more difficult to add on living space. If you wanted connected living space. So, you know, but these are all, these are all issues that can be overcome. And if that's the route we take, then that's, that's what we look into and we design around that.
Thank you, Chuck. And that's it for me for now. So.
So I think.
So basically, just like what Chuck just said, when we went out on a regular for the plans, you know, station 440 was unsafe operationally wise. You're going to relocate the station to the left side. So I wasn't sure. When you end up doing two projects at once, then we would have been renting spaces or we were putting fire trucks into the highway garage for storage at nighttime because they can't stay out in cold climate. We also thought we were going to get a better bang for the buck buying two stations at one time. That was the whole original game plan from day one, that you would have two templates. Because basically, station three and four are almost two templates together. In fact, when that station was built in the early eighties with by Lozer Pilots, and they had also looked at it way back in the day. But that's the original game plan going forward. So you'll have two different templates right now. But, you know, that was the original game, the best bang for the buck to buy two at one, similar to what we do with major deer purchasing in Crog and everybody else. But now that we're not, then we got to just piecemeal and there will be stuff that might not be able to get done with whatever we have left or moving on. Going from that aspect, but that makes sense.
You know, we kind of know that everybody wants, but do you want to be able to help with that? Questions before you go or do you rather?
You know, I'm going to do one. Well, I have also toured all four fire departments. Plain Road, I'm not really familiar except the other side of town. I've heard there's a lot more houses being built over there. I mean, is that section of town going to need? I mean, we're going to add a bay. So is that, in your opinion?
The reason that station was built is when you had Charles Street, the major developments out there, that station had to be built. Because when you do your insurance thing, what's the first thing that someone asks when you buy a house anywhere? Where's nearest fire station with higher protection value? So we looked at years ago, if you were closing that firehouse, because we were looking at cost, cost cuts well to town. But that station, we originally put a tanker up there because that's your worst water supply area of the town. Right now, we, we have removed and moved the tankers around because of faster response, because of staffing. I have two or three drivers up in that area right now, but a year from now, we could have four or five. But, you know, depending on staffing during the day as well. So adding a bay, then we can start programming for the future. We get housing and businesses and the rest of the stuff where you'll be able to store 30 of them up in that neck of the woods as well. So that's the, did that answer that?
You know, it would be, so I guess if we're going to refurbish that second fire station, that's part of the plan. Would that be accurate?
What do you mean, what's part of the plan? I want to, I want to, I want to put another bay in there. Keep in mind that the, the Christmas fire truck is, is housed there as well. We could find another. You know, in theory, we could find another bay for that. Not that I would ever, ever consider scrapping that program. So, right. So, and I'm, and I'm in complete agreement with that. So if it were life or death, we could certainly move the, the Christmas fire truck for lifesaving stuff and, you know, store it. I don't want to say in a public works, the facility or somewhere, but that's not the case right now. We'll build another bay. And that's, you know, that's a long time away for us to even consider. Again, I don't think the fact that we would refurbish versus building a new one. I'll stand here and say that will not affect the life of somebody we do refer versus a new one. And I think it'll be more visibly responsible.
No, I would agree. I just want to make sure that, that side of town is also open.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have some, some questions on the finances of this. If I'm reading all of this correctly, you know, we have a $5 million bond. We're saying that three forty is going to be about 2.2 million and it's about 2.8 million. Do we have any idea what we're looking at from the perspective of refurbishment cost on three forty?
We haven't put that out to Chuck yet.
Okay. What are we looking to do there? All I've heard so far is place the roof and add a bay. Is that?
That would be the major, major things to do. But, you know, we want Chuck to, to dig and dig into that. We're just trying to move cautiously. And we wanted to get this set up for the first one and then we move into the, the four forty.
Okay. I'm just looking at the rationality of, of what we're looking at for the 5 million. And depending on the cost of the refurbishment of Plains Road, how does that equate from a cost benefit analysis on the spend of a new building? And what the balance would be reflected there to be used for, if nothing else, just the replacement of the foundation in 140. So I'm trying to find value per dollar out of the 5 million and where it's going to land. Chuck, would you happen to have just a spitball reference? If we were to replace the roof, what are we looking at for a roof cost on a building the size of 440?
I, pre, pre-COVID, I, I wanted to say we were in the 150 to $200,000 range or something. So you're, that's at, at this point, without talking to our cost estimator, that's kind of, you know, you're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. So if we estimate it high at like 250 to 300 for that, are we thinking from the perspective of adding on a bay? As Steve had mentioned, are we looking at a similar structure? Because that building's all brick, correct? That building's all brick. So are we looking at a similar, similar structure for adding on or are we going to add on with like a modern building kind of?
The similar structure was, was my intent. If you look at downtown here at 240, I believe, there's been several bay additions on there. You, you know, you can look at it and you can see it with the naked eye standing there. But from the street driving by, you certainly don't notice it all that much.
I'm not totally worried about the aesthetics of it. You know, I don't need it to be pretty. I need it to be functional. So John, you happen to know when we added on to 240, I know it's not going to be even close from an estimate perspective, but what were we looking at for adding on?
The last, the last addition that we added on at station 240, it was $25,900. It was an SCBA. The last, the last addition that we added on at Station 240, it was $25,900. It was an SCBA room and air room. We just added two bays. But we could not bring the roof up because of the structural study of it.
Right.
So that was 25,900. And the purpose of that was to grab the space for future planning, but I got gridlocked because of the steel structure, if you remember.
So that was kind of my concern with the roofing on, on 440 is I know there's a lot of structural issues with that roof and a lot of leaking and stuff like that. I don't know if that, that issue.
So floors on the flat side where the bay would go. So the other section is dropped down. So it would be added on to that same.
I'm just thinking of the roof replacement for 440. Just from seeing it and being in there and looking at the stuff that's happened, I don't know if a simple roof replacement, if you're going to have to do any kind of pitching or anything else to change it from a structural perspective, if that even is a possibility for, for that, or are we looking at just a, we're going to put a home in?
That's an engineering standpoint, from my standpoint, that we'd rather have a pit roof because then we'll be shovel it.
Well, and I know we've just had a lot of structural issues in 440 with leaking and everything else. So I would want to make sure that we're not just throwing money on.
We had an extra bay, but.
I can. I might, I might be able to answer that. So that building, John, correct me if I'm wrong, that was built in 87?
Eighty-seven, eighty-eight, yes.
So typically those roofs last 15 to 20 years. So, you know, I think, and, and it's the original roof, you know, I think the town's gotten its money's worth out of it. And it, and it probably should have had some maintenance done to it. You know, like I said, that's the typical lifespan of those types of roofs. So.
You're thinking we can possibly fix that with just a new roof and the maintenance rather than actually having to change the structural stability of the roof?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything wrong structurally. It would just be if we wanted to get away from having the flat roof and, you know, maybe we could still have a flat roof, but put more pitch on it or something like that. And one, just to kind of back up just a little bit, not to throw a wrench or delay what we're trying to do here, but the, the thoughts for rehabbing on Plains Road, the, the roof is really necessary. It needs to have the roof done. Adding the bay is very important, but there's also lots of other issues that need to be addressed. Handicap bathrooms, code issues, fire alarms, this sort of thing to, to bring the building up to code. So we haven't, while we talked about the roof and adding a bay, you know, we, we kind of need to meet as a group and go through the list of items for that building and kind of pick out based on cost or priority. You know, what are, what are we gonna, what are we going to do here? What are we going to prioritize? And some of that might be, you know, how much money are we going to have left from Garing Road? So I, I just, maybe we don't get hung up on, okay, we're going to, we're going to do this to Plains Road because I don't, I don't think that's been fully vetted yet.
Okay, that makes sense. So if I'm thinking about all of this, then we're saying depending on the, the pick off the list of what's important, most important. If I went high, you're looking at maybe a million dollars around that area.
That's, I think that's reasonable, much less than 2.8.
So that gets us to about 3.2, which it does about 1.8 to handle the structural issues of the crumbling foundation and the other things that are happening at 140. Correct? And, okay, all right. So that helps me level set. I appreciate that. Now, Chuck, I wanted to ask about the proposal that you brought forward. On here, you have about a 22.6% contingency built in from the direct rates of that. Can you go over that for me and, and explain to me why we're building such a high contingency?
Sure. So we've updated the cost estimate a bunch of times here and the last update covered a span of two months and basically the costs went up about $100,000 in two months. So we're, we're trying to realistically anticipate, you know, as the costs go up, your contingency should also should also increase. And, you know, that was a discussion that we had as a group and we've, you know, we, the, the group felt that that was kind of best practice to make sure that we didn't have a shortfall here.
So I guess.
That's the same thing that we also address when we, with the building, the first goal of the meeting is the initial lack of foresight in building this contingency on the town side. When you had the builders and the contractors, after we have built in about that same amount for a contingency. So I think that's appropriate.
I just think 23% is, that's a pretty steep number. So can you get into a little bit about the burdens and markups and what exactly that's covering? Because it looks to me like that's, like the liability insurance is one thing, but the, the performance and payment bond, Lisa, is that the bonding cost?
That is not, no. Performance bonds are that would be what the developer would need to provide to make sure that they complete the project. So definitely. And to make sure that they're paying, there's any subcontractors. All that to make sure that subcontractors are paid as well. The bonding costs were separate.
So I guess that I don't understand all the burdens and markups on here because that's the biggest piece of the contingency of the $400,000 is in this fees and performance bonds and general conditions and project requirements. So.
So, can I jump in and try and answer that?
Please do.
Okay. So the general conditions and project requirements, typically, you know, the way these, these cost assessments are put together, you have, you have all the different components of the building. So the masonry, the site work, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, all, all these different categories of work. And you estimate those. And then the, the contractor that you end up hiring, you know, they're, they need to be able to oversee the project and have a project manager and, you know, they have overhead costs to run the project or to, to do the project. So, you know, that's what those general conditions and project requirements, that's what, that's what that covers. Lisa explained the performance and payment bonds. You know, the, the contractor also has to purchase insurance. And the fee, I believe, is the building permit and any other possible fees, which I don't think there are any. I think it's just the the building permit.
So that, that's something that as a town, we can waive?
We, go ahead, Lisa.
I, it's not in my place to respond. Right? You want me to respond?
I do, yes.
Sorry about that. The, the town does have the option to waive the building permit fee. However, there's a portion of the building permit fee that we would still have provide payment for, which is to the state. So there would be a portion that could be waived. I would, I would also mention that besides building permit fee, there, there'd have to be a double check of this, the detail of this, Chuck. I don't know if it included something besides building permits. There may be other fees for testing or anything else like that. I don't know.
And then the general 5% contingency is on top of all of the other stuff.
Yes.
All right. I don't want the contingency stuff being that high, but I'm assuming that we'd be managing to try to keep that down as well as we can and looking to optimize the dollars on that. Because it almost sounds like with a wish and a prayer, we can get quite a bit done with the $5 million still. Maybe not all new stations that's originally looked at, but with some good management, the majority of it with this bond hopefully. I think that was all I pretty much had at this point. Other than what is our communication plan going to be to the, the residents? Besides just a public hearing to say we're scrapping one, whatever. And at this point, I don't know, depending on what you guys just said there, that we really can scrap any of the 340, 140 or, or 440. Just we have to shift expectations of how much is going to get done for the $5 million. So we wouldn't be looking to change the scope of the referendum at this point, would we?
I don't, I don't think we need to change the scope a bit at this point. It's kind of, we're trying to keep it in focus on the horizon. But at the same time, move cautiously. I think, I, how have you guys communicated? Pre-referendum, how did you communicate it out? I'm, I'm happy to, you know, thanks to Bev's timeline and such to, to explain basically much of what has occurred. And then I'm trying to act as somewhat of the fiduciary for the town, but at the same time, do the best I can for public safety. And that, you know, I don't want to throw any previous people under the bus, but this, this was a very ambitious project in, in itself. Then all the factors of the world came in and I'm happy to communicate that via our website, via eBlast. However, again, I'm just getting into this seat here. How do you guys see fit?
I would think we would definitely want something on the website. Possibly an eBlast referring people to it and then on the town Facebook page, just indicating that, you know, we're kind of reshuffling the tech. Still expect to have replacement of the fire stations. We're going to modify the timeline. And it's going to be the biggest bang for the buck and then see what's left at the end. We have every hope and intention that it's going to cover all green, but we won't know that. It sounds like we wouldn't even be starting building, unbuilding one until 2023. Chuck, is the intent that we wouldn't start making any modification on 440 until 340 is done?
That, that is yet to really be discussed.
Say that again.
The intent that we wouldn't start on 440 until.
No. We wanted to look at these numbers here with, with Chuck's estimate. And then meet again and, and go with our, our best foot forward. And likely it's going to be something along the lines of asking Chuck to now give us an estimate for what we, what we need at 440 up on Plains Road. And why don't we, I don't think, given the cushion that we have, worst case scenarios and the contingencies, I think we have plenty to do the refurb as well and start moving forward on that. And see where it takes us. I mean, the other option is, you know, do we drag our feet in hopes that prices come down? I don't feel very lucky. So.
It's worth the years. But given the, the timeline and the concerns for the apparatuses and that, I I'm thinking that we're probably not going to be able to even start 440 until the new 340 is up and done, just because we have to give them all new papers to sleep while we're working on that one.
Public safety would be the first priority. And John would be the expert in shuffle the deck and see what we're going to do with that.
So at that point, I think Chuck had said we wouldn't have a CO until 2020.
Before.
2024.
Yeah.
So we would probably start working on 440 fall of 2023. So we're actually not even then. Okay. All right. I'm just thinking timeline. Okay.
And I was just going to add, maybe comment here about the work we posted. It looks like there was nothing in the firehouse category project webpage for July 23rd too, but so that could still be used and put to the front page, I think, and maybe eBlast. Yeah, it does mention this meeting. So I think providing the further details and links to the timeline and everything, at least much detail that you can provide, it'd be good to have it there and make sure, yeah, we'll probably get this made aware. The, yeah, social media, obviously, the, the regular media was on earlier this evening, but getting that out to folks that they're just aware of what's going on because yeah, not to rehash it too much, but definitely the referendum was put out very strongly advertised and supported by a lot of people. So having these changes really clearly communicated there is probably the best avenue to start and then see what goes forward from there. And I think that's a good one. If you're all set, that's me, Chair.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that Councilor Newt brought up a lot of good, a lot of good issues. And I think there's a lot of things that, if anything, for me, just reinforce the fact that I'm still saying that we need at least a subcommittee to move forward. I think it's something that, again, not that I, that we have any doubt on anybody's abilities, but I think it's something that we need to see the granularity and give the people, you know, show them that the town council is engaged, that we do have the appropriate oversight. But also, again, I, I'm seeing it as a positive to give that authority to say, this is what we are doing and this is what we, within, within the funds that we have, this is what we feel is appropriate. So that you don't have to come back every time that something needs to be changed. If there's a simple variance or something like that, where somebody could question, well, why did you do this as opposed to that? With the committee, with the subcommittee, whatever, whatever the, the council decided to do. I think that's gives you the authority and the ability to do that and gives you the coverage and gives us the granularity and the visibility on it so that we can say, yes, this is something that we want and that this is why we want to do this and these are the reasons why. That's our role in this. And I think that that's why I would, again, suggest strongly that at least a subcommittee is appointed as hastily as possible to move forward with this. I mean, I think that with our subcommittee, we've shown it works well, that they've come up with some great decisions. I think that'd be right, the subcommittee's provisions in the proper way, that it will give them the authority to be able to act on their own within certain parameters. And if there's anything above a certain amount that they need, then at least come back to the, to the council and say, this is what, what, this is what's going on to our proposals. That's, that's my thoughts, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor. I would be in agreement with that. If any other questions or comments, because at this point, it is only a discussion item. We're not taking any hard actions. I think based on our discussion, we have some potential marching orders to bring back to our next meeting in terms of maybe establishing and ordinance to create a subcommittee or something of that nature. There's no other questions? Thank you, everyone, for that robust conversation. So we'll move on to eight point two, which is a consideration of resolution for various ARPA subcommittee funding use recommendations. We got a lot of preview and information from our two council members and our staff. So I'll turn it over to Brian and Lisa and anyone else if they would like to write additional information that wasn't previously discussed on that topic.
We had a, an ARPA subcommittee meeting. We went through all the things in great detail, especially number one on the list in regards to mental health aspect of it. And I believe number two, we're going to have, like Scott Lappin has a CROG. So we won't have to go out to bid a vendor for that, I believe, as well. Those are really the, the longest talking points. The other stuff is, is somewhat lighter of a lift and that's where we stand. Our balance is at just under $800,000.
Thank you, Brian. I think I'll just add for the Florida questions, just also thank Beshir Egan and helping you to check the mental health task force, I think, trying to bring a lot of their work and Maureen and Bev as well. Kudos to both of you for, for doing a lot of lifting the brains forward, some, some tangible recommendations and funding that we can help them out through the ARPA funds. I'm appreciative of all the information that was provided. But I'll open the floor to any questions helpers may have.
So I just wanted to talk about that first item that we were, we're looking at there, the consulting services for the mental health and selections use task force. This was something that they brought forward to us. And when we first put this task force together, the whole intent of it was to, A, review the services that the town already has and provides, educate people in the services that we have. And then also to find out where we're lacking. And I think the, the task force has done a lot of really good work to talk about a lot of different things, but the piece that's missing is where we're lacking. You know, we know all the services that human services and that is providing, but to really understand what the community needs, this $10,000 for this survey is going to be important. And I just think we need to find a way, again, this is like, obviously, this is my, my message for this meeting, is how we get this out to the public, to get the most amount of people to respond to the survey so we can figure out, you know, where, where people are seeing issues. So this one here, I think it's, it's part of the initial spend that they asked to bring forward and it's, it's a good spend, just to get really good, good good pulse on where the community is in regards to desire to meet them.
Yeah, in terms of the implementation, I know we don't want to rush implementation of the survey, but if it was closer to celebrate talent, that would be a very big public event, maybe have a mental health task force. If it was closer to celebrate talent, that would be a very big public event, maybe have if mental health task force was available, the fan table or. Wanna do something or have it at the town's general table of information, you know, we could all. As we walk around and direct people to that and let them know how to be involved in that survey, or even get pre-signed up the. Yeah.
Our code that would link it now.
Yeah. And that's the end, Jack.
Yeah, um. Maureen, I essentially, you know, were you able to ask Bonnie about that question, because I knew that was a question that. Sam brought that up there in the subcommittee, were you able to hear? About how she would go about getting lots of people to reach that number?
Yeah, I, I did have a conversation with Bonnie about Bonnie is, Smith is the uh CEO of Wayland Consulting who. Who um submitted the proposal. Um, she recognizes that the number that she put in that proposal may be ambitious in a town our size, so she wanted to put that out there. That, you know, we might need to reconsider that number, maybe reduce it to fifty, three hundred. And guys have just clarified that the ten thousand dollars on the proposal is not just for the survey, there is a specific amount for this survey. I just don't want people thinking ten thousand dollars for a survey, because that's, that's, you know, there, there are. Uh, several other pieces to that proposal as well, so. A- as was mentioned, in, in, indeed, it, it, it would have to be a community effort. We can't have one person who works at a consulting firm. Alone, say that she's gonna be able to reach that many town, I, you know, residents of our town, so it would have to be, you know, pushed through. Um, the help of the Board of Education, with face, Facebook pages, with the, with the council, with, with the departments of the town. She also talks about incentives, and that would be built in to the proposal as well, you know, answer the survey and enter, enter for a fifty dollar gift card. That kind of thing. She said that, that helped moving along as well.
Probably also connecting with probably the LPC and. Other services, meaning the e-blasts for itself, that has a little bit of scope, but even the social media, I think there's multiple opportunities, especially, like you said, there's an incentive or. An opportunity to get something local, you know, like a gift card to a local restaurant or their store that is frequently used, that could probably help draw some additional interest.
And the last thing that I had here is the remainder of all of these, of these things that are on here. Are all, well, three of them, the three larger items are all reduction, direct reduction, reduction in debt. And then um the last three items, I pushed back a little bit, uh, Lisa, on these ones, because these do not reduce debt. But they are going to leave the bill. Um, what they are going to do is leave us um availability for funding in the CNRE. Um, so that does, in a sense, help us longer term from a debt perspective, because we can do more cash on hand.
Yeah.
By doing this, so it's.
Yeah.
The, um, this does affect our capital, our capital plan across the board. Um, and again, this is a way for us to alleviate. Tax burden from people and long-term debt, which you all know how I feel about long-term debt, so.
It helps the people through that as you go, I think that was the inception of the back in what, like ninety-nine or whatever, when this was made. It's been a while, but we're getting there.
Yeah, so if anybody has any questions on any of these things specifically, we did talk about them, what do you think, do you go?
Are there any questions for health measures? Any other?
I do.
Yeah. Your question.
So are these all the, and we discussed that these are all being improved up to, because. I got here early tonight and I was looking at these numbers on the, the capital budget, page three sixty-two, three sixty-three. And the numbers was in the Board of Education, some have changed, I think.
Yeah, and I know this.
Okay.
In all the documents.
Okay.
If you'd like me to explain it.
Yeah, sure, of course.
Yeah, for, for example, the Board of Education ones, um, I don't have the, the numbers from the budget book offhand, but. There are.
Uh, I could make the credit.
What had happened was during the budget process, I was trying to. Juggle things, move things around and. Um, part of those items were cut and. Walt and I discussed how we would fund the rest of it. And he would try to find money in his budget to cover the differential he had to. So what I did was when I proposed the numbers, I put it back at what it really should have been. For the ones that are different, and I tried to put on the um. The cover sheet what it was in the capital budget, you'll see. In parentheses, it says CIP. It shows what it was in the budget. For example, the uh Crossfarms ADA. I just rounded it up to two hundred thousand to make it easier to. To deal with as far as the ARPA fund, the um. Number three was the same number, and number four was the same number. Number five was the same number, and so was six, but the uh number seven, the dishwasher and sink system. Um, I had cut it to forty thousand and Walt was going to try to find. Five thousand in his budget or hopefully savings, so. Yes, each one of these would be up to, whenever, whenever you approve these. Once it's complete, it would be up to that amount and the balance would go back into your ARPA fund.
Right, I'm just wondering, because on, like, I don't jump ahead, but resolution, and. First line for mental health says up to, and then the rest of them just have a dollar. So I don't know.
But you could say up to in the new resolution, I. Um, that one had more pieces broken out. But they're all up to. And now it is.
Are there any other questions? All right, I would think we begin a motion to approve a resolution that one needs to amend it so that one through seven say up to. The dollar amount that is provided.
I'm.
Second. The discussion, seen on all of the papers, everybody saying aye. I, I imposed, right, as in the amendments, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Ben, thank you, Maureen, for all your work. Eight point three, consideration of resolution of the third rescue two forty, heavy duty rest and fire apparatus, that surplus property within the town. Even still with us, so. I guess I'll turn it over to Brian, the chief by itself, if you want to write additional details about what was provided and impacted regarding the truck.
I have no additional details unless chief by tells us. Those are, those are.
Do we have an idea where the truck might end up going during the surplus once it's sold in the past? Obviously, it's got probably the other much smaller communities like Vermont or New Hampshire, or. Would it stay, possibly stay within the state or region?
Permission to speak, sir? You don't, absolutely, chief, thank you. Uh, basically, it gets advertised. Um, I know someone else had some questions before, but they usually advertise it, uh. Various seals methods, the last truck that we sold did go to Vermont, that was the Wappen truck, yeah, we had sold that did go to Vermont for a local company. Um, but this one, who knows, but um, you never know if someone's gonna buy it right now and, you know, look at uh. You know, smaller sites or towns, but price-wise, I, who knows, but hopefully when sold that, that money that, this will be generous back into. Our fund.
Yeah, I, I think that would be my follow-up, my follow-up question is what, where do the funds go after the sale? Yeah, a lot of service, that's.
I just got back from a wonderful vacation. And, you know, I really could use another one. Just kidding, um, certainly, we, uh, we have to see, that truck was so old. Right?
Two thousand and two.
Right, so, it's before my time, I'm not sure. Where the funds were, where it was originally purchased from. If it was purchased through the ambulance reserve fund, then that's where the money should go as a. Reclaim, uh repayment to that fund. And that would be used for future replacements of app, ambulances or other apparatus. Where, where possible, um. If it weren't through that fund, then it would go to the capital non-recurring fund for future days, you know. Purchases for capital. That's what our charter requires.
So when that truck was bought, it was prior, so it was obviously right when I was taking over, and that's in the process of when I was starting to set up those. Appress reserve accounts, and we were separating, and we did the ambulance billing, but all that was just being set up at the timeframe. Um, so I can't honestly give you the right answer for where it was purpose set up, but that's what, that was the future plan to keep rolling stock and. Use the model behind it.
Okay, so, some of the concerns we have right now, again, like we're seeing with everything. The costs coming in are far more than we ever anticipated because of the supply chain. Uh, situations, so a recommendation would be maybe to put it into the ambulance fund. Um, instead of to be put in there to provide for any uh shortfall in, for a need. Replace ambulances or things that are coming in short. In the capital area that's the budget. Certainly, we'd have to come back to the town council as a request to do that, but. The funds would be in the reserve that we.
I agree with that, yeah, those were my follow-up questions, yeah, then, if we, we wanted to do that, we'd have to come back to us, so appreciate that clarification. And then, Councilor, do you have any question?
So, um, if it was purchased with debt. For charter, it has to go back to capital non-recurring? Okay, um, but we have the ability for the charter to exempt that and put it someplace else? If, if, if it was purchased, you do have the ability to um. Make a motion to put it somewhere else if you want it to. Um. If it was purchased with the ambulance funds, then that's where it needs to go. It's usually. Either the capital non-recurring or back to the ambulance, so. Almost do it. Okay, I'm hopeful for a good sale because uh, everybody needs something and nobody's getting anything, so hopefully that gives us a little bit of a. A, a padding and a good sale price.
Okay, are there any other questions? All right, see none, and initiate a motion to approve the draft resolution as outlined in eight point three.
Okay.
I'm moved by that, can you get a second there, second? Sure, I'll second. Second, I can't, or move on. The discussion, all the favoritists are saying aye. 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 All right, yes, we are on to eight point four. Have a number of re-appointments and appointments, but I think you put a motion to approve those as outlined in eight point four, for the. Permission to give all disabilities, I feel, in that call for admission.
So, so, so.
There, seconded, uh, any discussion, I'm just probably generic, I know, Councilor, we usually brings up this vacancy that. Colin and CT dot gov, I believe, but I have the, the email address, but. There's plenty of vacancies, and there's one now on the ethics commission, anyone would like to apply. Definitely get out there, it's great concern, we need more volunteers, so.
And I should have mentioned this earlier, John and I probably both missed it. Um, so, I don't know how it works, Jen Galichant is gonna be new member on the town health, um, the mental task force. Um, she's been played for someone for whatever reason, so. They might be discussing that throughout an idea of Board of Education meeting, but I don't know if it's something we.
Yes, is it through the board? If it's through the Board of Education, if she can be representing the Board of Education, I don't know.
I think we still had to approve.
I think, yeah, we can check back on the minutes, but I think we had to vote for everybody that was serving on that task force, so. They may have to submit most information that whoever, whoever resigned stepped down, and that they're recommending. Yeah, for Galichant serving that role going forward, then, yeah.
Now, maybe we need to, John, let the mental, when do we meet again? Because if she's there, she can't really, we technically vote. Right, so we just gotta.
And I'll be there tomorrow night, so I can bring this discussion, and let them know. In advance that we might need to go through that process, and I can check with Brian and town staff about.
Okay, just mind that. So I apologize for that earlier, we won't be talking about this, all right, great.
All right, senior discussion, all those in favor, you can by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, as you can, and I'll move on to new item eight point five, which was the. Resolution authorizing the issue of nine million dollars of pledge bonds to refund certain fire bonds of the town. And find us a traditional mouse, it's a public hearing for August twenty-third. Uh, just gonna invite Lisa immediately, going to provide some additional background, so at the beginning, before we set it to the agenda, but. You want to provide any additional clarification on why we're doing this, what?
Sure, I'll, I'll reiterate what I said earlier, benefit of those may not have been online or. Here at the time, um, the reason that we're requesting is this is because we are going out. For a bond and note sale on September fifteenth. Part of that process in the timeline is to have to go to the rating agency to get a bond rating. Um, on your, on your sale document. While we were looking at our total debt portfolio. We determined that there were going to be some current um eligibility to do a current refunding. Which we're allowed under the federal law to do, and we always look at that to try to see if there's any savings. That we could enjoy. Now, whenever you're looking at a bond refunding, you wanna try to have at least a minimum of a two percent um. Save, you know, a, a minimum of two percent savings. In order for it to be feasible, and this, this does generate a little over two percent in savings. The, the benefit of it, you know, even though it's a small amount, had we tried to do it on its own without another bond sale happening. The issuance cost would have eaten up a lot of the savings. So because we already have the bond attorney looking at everything, looking at the official statement, which is the document. That must be prepared for a bond sale, there's a lot of um savings because we're doing it all together. So we're recommending to move forward to. Refund that debt and issue it at a lower cost. Now, however, if. Interest rates get any crazier, on the so far, they've been kind of stabilizing in the bond market. But if they get worse at the time of the day of the sale, then we would not move forward with that run of refunding if it's not feasible. To do so, we will just decline the bids that come in on those bonds. Um, but it is an opportunity to get at least. Right now, it's about two hundred and nine thousand dollars net after there's some expenses there, it's about two twenty. Twenty-one, I have the numbers here, um, in total, so I, in my cover sheet, I had two hundred thousand, because I. Didn't have the information from late this afternoon. Um, so. That's what we would like to move forward, and in order to make it happen in a timely manner, we of course have to have a bonding resolution. That allows us to move forward with that, and that's where we're coming to be tonight. Which would be to go through the appropriate process of setting a public hearing. Then after public hearing, we would authorize it and, and we have a quick turnaround to be able to make it all happen, actually, going to save.
Thank you, Lisa, are there any questions from helpers? Captain Nujian?
He says it's gonna extend it to the metro press, but he, it is gonna extend the um end date for any of the, um. No, you can't, you cannot extend that, um. When, when you refund it, you can't extend it out legally, so it will not extend out, and then you can certainly speak with your, with the financial advisor. When he's here at the next meeting, um, it will not extend it out, and as a matter of fact, I'm having him. Run some scenarios for me to look at a shorter maturity level on our other, since. We're not issuing some debt and our debt management plan included a lot of. Projects to be funded by debt, I wanna, I'm looking at another scenario, so rather than going out twenty years on certain things. Maybe look at a ten or fifteen-year scenario to see what is gonna be the best deal for us to save money in interest expense going on in the future. We may have some higher bond payments in the beginning, but if I can make it work.
I'm just speaking my language, it's gonna like lower the amount of time that we're.
Am I earning my salary yet?
And the overall, I'm looking at the overall thirty-three percent rebate. Payback, so if this is gonna, if there's a way to refinance down to a, a lower payment term, it's not gonna be, you know, fiscal, like a fiscal cliff. Uh, in this savings. And out over that time period, okay?
Yeah, so we're, we're trying to look at, you know, the best, best alternative, basically, you're putting money in escrow to pay those people that. Do get the interest, it's, it's involved, but. Um, we'll go out through a competitive process rather than a negotiated process, because I think that's. Probably gonna be the better option for us.
And I know it's not a huge amount, but taking that four hundred and fifty-five thousand off of the debt is. Gonna have some impact, so I'm assuming you're gonna incorporate that into the rerun.
That's exactly what I'm doing, because now that some of that's coming off. Maybe rather than going out longer period of time with the new debt that we would be issuing. Maybe that can go shorter, have faster amortization. Plan, amortization means to, to. Go shorter, have faster amortization plan. Amortization means to to pay it off quicker. Well. Try to do a quicker payday, so which in turn would be a reduction to interest cost over the life of the debt. But would also. Raise the principal payment that we'd be making in a shorter period of time. So we gotta look at the impact as to what I budgeted, what I planned for the future. Because I'm staying off after next year. I'm hoping not to have to raise the budget after next year. It will stay stable until the debt starts falling off the books. So that's how I have the plan set up right now. Everything changes. There's debt that I had planned on issuing this year for a fire truck. The way things are going with the economy, we're not getting that truck right away, so I'll wait until he's closer to the process. And needs the cash to issue all debt, so things are changing.
To do that, Lisa, or if if we issue the debt, the interest market's kind of.
You can't.
Altered, right? We only have a certain amount of time that we can hold it before we have to spend it, correct?
We have a, there are certain, depending on the type of debt we issue, there are pay down requirements. You have to have a certain percent by six months or so on and so forth. You know, it all depends on what you fall under. So the plot, once you start issuing notes, the plot starts to.
Right, and we don't have a date enough to be able to sustain shape that. So this with the four hundred and fifty five plus the two hundred and nine savings, we're looking at over six hundred and. Six hundred, almost close to seven hundred thousand dollars in savings with these two files. Like that, Lisa, I like that. Speaking my number.
Well, we're trying.
Nine.
They do what we can.
Take that, we got this down now.
Well, we're trying.
We're gonna hear back the pretzel now, so I can't promise.
I won't hear it.
I'm gonna say it about you. I don't wanna hear it.
I know.
He's telling me that he probably got a higher big class on something. My thought got caught.
Are there any other questions? Alright, see, I entered a motion to approve resolution that went in eight point five and set down for a public hearing on August twenty third, twenty twenty two at seven P M. The hybrid meeting in six floor town council chambers.
Okay.
There's a second. Second, my councilman. Alright, any discussion? All in favor?
Roll call.
Okay, roll call vote.
Sorry, motion.
Council meeting chair. And same here. Alright, we'll do a roll call. So council and you check.
Aye.
Council Luba.
Aye.
Council Nuccio.
Aye.
Fisher Regan.
Aye.
Council Khan. I'm an eyes of unanimous.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. Alright, bring us the nine old business we can have done. So ten is the report of the town manager.
I think it away. Yep, thank you, Aaron Bartlett and Lisa or Leslie, I'm sorry, for their work here in the town. I can tell you. I didn't I didn't have a lot of experience with the area, but certainly Leslie in her position as grants, I worked a lot and she is absolutely exiting with grace. Buttoning up loose ends. There's there'll be a there'll be a transition meeting with everyone involved and making sure. Everything is a clean separation. I mentioned that we're overseeing, watching closely that the mobile fuel thing that to this point, it's gonna be no impact. To the environment, the D P's research reaffirmed that and um. You have fire, gym and buildings and D P W all kind of keeping an eye on it. Counselperson Nuccio, you had asked about the coupons. You'll see on page four of the manager's report. The senior farmers market coupons book that. That has out of her office, which is fairly successful. And then. John continues, Chief Bytel continues to watch the drought and keep us well informed. We're at a level two, fingers crossed for rain. It's impacting our soccer fields and I hear about it on a daily basis as well.
Don't miss a soccer in this town.
And then concur. And then the only only exception to that, I would say. Council Nuccio's pickleball really seems to be picking up in our town. It's in all seriousness and something that. We should watch and pay attention to with support for our residents. That's all.
Are there any questions?
Can I just ask any question?
Yeah.
I was just, I know we just met with the historic district and the commission of people with disabilities. Is there any update I believe you're gonna be asking around or working, gonna quote from Earthworks or?
Not a quote. I asked Robbie Simons, who owns Earthworks and has a lot of. A lifetime of working with historic stones and such. I asked him to walk the green and he did and look at it and begin to determine the scope. Of a project to level all the stones to ADA and be prepared to present and talk to council about it. He's on vacation at a couple of spots through August here, so it was something we would look to revisit in September. He would he would welcome coming in and speaking about it and giving you guys, your council, an idea of what it would entail.
Um I think that's all I have.
Council meeting chair.
Ryan, you got the unfortunate, um you know, I I had fifteen minutes that weren't totally scheduled, so I read the whole reports. Um there was a, I was looking specifically at the grant information here and there's two federal grants on here, the safe streets for all and the federal local bridge program. And I know we've got some issues with the bridge off by the high school. And for the safe streets for all, that grant specifically has to do with like getting down to the unreal unrealistic goal of zero deaths and injuries on our nation roadways. But um what I I'm wondering is is this something that we're considering? And I'm thinking specifically about, um I don't know how this would fit in, but the walkability of one ninety five and having a connected sidewalk. In from Star Hardware all the way to seven eleven. The expansion of the sidewalks throughout the town and then, of course, the Talon Triangle, which, you know, every time I think about it, I think of John standing on the highway and a car going by a foot away from his head. Um just be one of the accidents that we have out there. So I'm looking at, is there anything here that we can do that's gonna put. Even more pressure on D O T, which really doesn't like me anyway right now. In regards to the safe road grants, do we have any kind of thing we can do?
Are you talking about, you you you're you specifically talking about the highway?
So there's two on here. There's a safe streets for all.
Yeah.
Which I'm wondering if we could look at walkability of one ninety five and expanding and looking at the, um, we have accident data. About deaths on eighty four.
Yeah.
And um we know we're getting a little bit of pushback from D O T at state level. On, you know, where that stretch of highway fits with the rest of the stretch of the highway. But um I think at this point, it might be worth looking at. Can we get some kind of federal anything to kind of evaluate that section?
So we kind of have to work in concert with Prague on the safe streets for all. And on certain projects that that we did identify that the sidewalk. Connectability through town, getting back there. I don't, I'm not sure exactly where she is, but that'll be a part of our transition meeting. Uh all of these will be. What was the other question?
Alright, so then the next piece is the federal local bridge program.
Yeah.
I know we've got some concerns with the bridge itself by the high school. There's some some issues up there. With the, we always have to keep replacing that road up there where it erodes where the actual bridge connects to the land section. So I thought shaking it. So there's I know there's issues with that bridge.
Yeah.
That may not have been talked about recently, but with this state federal grant local bridge program, I don't know how we get our talent bridges evaluated or did possibly on there.
I didn't see that bridge on there, um mostly down by. The bubble that down off the river is one of them and industrial road down there is the ones that I saw. I could be wrong, but I did not. I don't recall seeing one up by the high school.
Okay, well, that's why I'm bringing it up because I don't know that it's been talked about in a while, but if we have all the bridges that we're looking at, that, you know, as long as we're getting something out there for any kind of repair on that. But maybe there's some history we can find regarding the bridge up on um Cat Hole up there. I don't know.
You should probably find a study in that last time I had the train trailer fire and need that thinking. I can just date for that one.
Right. Is that the main bridge going over the highway?
Yes, sir.
It's the main one, yeah.
Also, Brian, the um public works Scott Lappin may have a report because I know they do send a survey. Report of the status of all the bridges in town.
Yeah.
And uh could it could, I don't, I wasn't involved in this. But Leslie could have worked with him to go through the ones that were in the worst condition to apply for this. So you may wanna discuss that with him and Leslie.
Yeah, see, if Scott and Leslie were merged on this, I feel like if that were something, I think Scott would have said identified that, but I'll go check.
Okay, um and then my question on the seniors market coupon and maybe Beth can answer this one is. How many people do we currently have that are requesting the coupons? And I've been reading this, these income levels are ridiculously low. Do we set those or are those set? So that's set by their set by the age of.
And I don't have the number off the top of my head, but they give you a certain like maybe forty or forty five of them. Years ago, I was able to purchase more, but they don't do that more. And that's hence we started the talent fresh program. Because you just get a certain lot of it.
There's there's a big push in the cities for these farmers markets.
Yeah, they are.
And you, I think that's what it was framed mostly around.
Okay, so the the seniors farmer market one is the income limit by DOAG. The talent fresh, we don't have an income limit up.
And we. We kind of use our family guidelines, but you know, we're we're a little flexible with that. The the senior, um the federal ones, they can only, there's a certain amount of money and they can only get one coupon, you know, the a book of coupons and use that at one time. With talent fresh, if the families continue to use them with a senior, we keep giving them out.
Okay, because I've had a few people reach out to me and the senior community who are just really struggling right now with fixed incomes and the cost of food and that.
Yeah.
A lot of people really reaching out with issues. So if there's a way for us to boost that program in any way, should make more availability to put some more dollars for it. And work with Lemix and the other farms that we have in town.
We we've been very fortunate. Um a lot of us actually did a fundraiser.
I know. Thousand dollars. They have a thousand for there to work for town.
Money from the Lions Club. So I don't feel like right now that we're in the hole in any way. I think it's a very successful program. And I think, and believe me, Jean reaches out every time we can think of every senior, everyone in the group's entry.
We just had a meeting last week on this exact.
Yeah.
Topic.
Okay. I just know it's very hard for a lot of these seniors to reach out and to admit that. So anything we can do that's proactively not like, you know.
Well, she goes to every complex too.
Okay.
And then the people that we know, you know, she she has connection with the the three senior housing. She meets with the the resident services coordinator. So she and she doesn't run the rebate, so she's pretty well known by that group, but we still reach out to.
Okay. That's all I had.
Yeah.
Council meeting chair, one question that I is under playing in development, the town engineer working on the townwide parks and rec. Yield accessibility study. Do we possibly have a timeline of when that might come back to us as well? I know it's on top of. The council and you check talked about just some of the things that we're trying to make sure we keep an eye on. You have an idea of.
Can you hit me with that one more time, sir?
It was the town engineering study for parks recreation fields for accessibility on page eight of the manager's report. I will see is curious if there's a timeline when that might be finalized and brought back to council, because I think that is something of. Interest. I know it was under Lisa, your your tenure, you kind of worked, said that there be funds. At the end of the fiscal year, at the start of this year, it's a commission shot to do that work.
Yeah, and he did, and I think. He should be finishing by the end of the month, but I don't have.
We got a meeting with. Two people and then.
He was meeting with the girls.
Girls, so to make come to you as well.
Yeah, they're gonna want, they want some time in front of us. We have, we had a calendar with them.
Yeah.
And kind of a re-meeting before, I think they wanna present.
Okay.
To council on projects.
If we're getting close.
Okay, good. That's great. That's it for me.
Couple of questions to you that. Number one. Uh one ninety five, the hearing. Does now is in order now?
This town what?
Does the town gotten upon that they're 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 gonna be working in the daylight rather than nighttime? That's a dumb. And a dumb question, but it's like a. Dumb idiot is they're doing a job in the daylight like in the sick lack in the morning and the showers and everything else.
That that's.
Unreal and doing this to the residents.
I I believe they have state guidelines as to when they can work during the day and when, and there's certain. There's certain rules and regulations on when they can work during the day and when they can work at night, but they've informed us. We're at, we are at the beck and call of D O T. They jumped it up a week on us. They did inform us of that. But as far as the hours of operation, I don't know what they're. I I get my guess is that the cost goes up when we do it overnight for that. So they try to do it mostly during the day.
And there's also the noise ordinance in the town that there's a certain timeline. I remember they have.
Any bug, they can't.
Doing any.
The first first week on it, so they were like almost like, what if you tried, but because of they didn't cover the. Falls and everything else and they were and the body was driving over it.
Yeah.
One, number two is any update on the water issue and uh? Any update on the? Foundation?
Uh I have no update on the foundation. The water issue, we have a meeting coming up in the. I believe to look at next steps. Is that accurate, Councilman Jill? Is that this week or next week?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but there's a meeting that's happening with deep D P H and the water commission to go over the report. To review all the findings and for the water commission to ask their question. After that meeting is done, the water commission deep in D P H will be coming for the town council to present the whole thing to the council. And the water commission to hopefully have their recommended solutions at that time. We won't hear back about the grant until September fifteenth, I think. It's, I think, the deadline for that submission. The town had to submit some information regarding affected residents and the grant won't be decided until the middle of September. So at that point, we'll at least have a better idea of what kind of, if any, what kind of. Dollars we might see for help from the state. At that point, we would have to think about moving forward with a decision.
I don't think the water commission has been notified of that meeting because I haven't seen anything.
Okay.
I'll make sure you get it.
Okay.
That, yeah, good reminder for next Monday when they meet.
I'm gonna put it on the agenda.
Yeah, at last minute.
Can I follow up on? Me and Amy, but. It's like forever ago when we had our first water, like the discuss the grant and everything. And there was a time that we were talking about. Nothing called a survey anymore, but is that? Something that's still be sent out to residents around there?
The problem with that is to really, I don't know why it connect more under the survey, but it was more of an intervention table. And it was if we got to the grant, if the council, if we got the loan program, then we'd be sending a letter to the resident. And to telling them what their cost would be and is potential seven and and if they're interested in cooking up. I think we did that before any decision was made would. So it's something we've been causing a lot of problems. Yeah.
So there's really like the the set of operations and how this has to really work is at this point, deep in D P H meeting with the water commission. So they're comfortable with their report findings. We really need to hear back from the state where we're falling within that grant process. If Talon qualifies for supplemental grant payment and all of that. At that point, when we have that information. And we have the meeting with the water commission for their recommendations on how it should be handled. And then the town council also has the ability to review this report and come up with their questions and that. Once we have the funding source, if we get any kind of grant money, at that point, the council would have to make a decision on. What we're gonna do, how it's gonna be funded, et cetera, et cetera. But in at that point, we would reach out to cut to to residents and that. It doesn't make sense to do it ahead of time because we don't have all those other public issues yet. And as anybody knows, anything with the state moves like molasses in the wintertime, so we're asking them regularly, but it's just. Checking off all the boxes and meeting with all the people and waiting to hear back from the grant in the biggest piece.
Yeah, it's kind of long.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
I know you're hopeful.
I'm totally hopeful. Don't kill me, alright? Don't crush my dreams.
Other questions from Brian? Alright, see, no one to eleven, which is adoption of minutes. So I entered in a motion to adopt minutes, not wanting to be in eleven point one.
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Alright, second, did any discussion? All in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, Council Murray, if your report finds the council, so will table or on table, it will. Have also Murray do a full report of the August correspondence at the second meeting of the month. Which brings us to Chairperson's report. I've had one resident come the last week's council chair hours, the three robust conversation. Which brings us to Chairperson's report, uh, had one resident come to last week's council chair hours, the three robust conversation, but mostly around board that issue, so. Okay, to refer them to other services, um, but thank them for coming up, it was actually, I think a limited venture, I think they started out in Brian's office, maybe the other dirt's office. Or somewhere else, and then finally got brought down to, to the room, so we'll try and make sure that everybody's, uh, going forward, I think they thought the chair hour was in the chair. Chambers, but they're actually in their way up that way, so, um, and I just, I want to thank everyone for the commentary. That I've been seeing the past couple of weeks regarding the vandalism, and I would like to just read into the record a statement I want to share. So over the past few weeks, act of hatred and intolerance for our L G B T Q plus community, as well as blatant disrespect for personal property have become. Vocal point for media attention and community conversations. These acts both against privately owned property and signage supporting pride are distressing, but the response for recommitment for acceptance and inclusivity. Show promise that Talon is and will continue to give town sports one another. Their response from my colleagues in the council was resolute and unanimous after the initial incident, as was demonstrated through our meetings and through a statement released on our town's webpage. As the segment seemed to trying to heighten displays of pride and inclusiveness and continued, their response from our town was stronger and more resolute. It hardens me to live in a town that shows this kind of tightens, or that this kind of hatred to the back door of history and moves forward together to another one that is open and affirming to all. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues on the town council, our town manager's office, and our neighbors who have spoken up for our neighbors and friends who were impacted by its vandalism. As allies and shunned these destructive targeted acts of intimidation towards them. We must continue to support those who have historically marginalized like the L G B T Q plus community and foster a network of services and programs from the town and schools. That are inclusive and diverse, we must continue, continue the conversation and listen to the struggles of our neighbors. That they are facing, so their voices are valued and validated, together we must persist, persevere, persevere, and most importantly, be proud of talent. We've done it before, we can do it again, and we'll continue to do so for years to come, as you hold true to our hearts that love and kindness conquer all. Thank you. With that, communication petitions from council members?
Yeah, I. I think we've all somehow vocally. However, displeased or unhappy with what's happened with personal property, um. Just not being nice to our pride community, it's really disheartening, John, Tammy. And so we all look at something on Facebook and, um, and we, John, you win it, yes, you wrote it best out. So I just wanted to also thank my colleagues for speaking for them, but. What I. I think you mentioned, John, in your post was, didn't realize how much a sign means to people. Um, so I think somehow as a council, we can show that. We're listening, I was hoping you would show up tonight, but I know things happen and people can't. I personally wanted that a vision letter to go out to the community that we put together. Um, I guess I understand the reasons why we did not, but I just was hoping we could discuss if there's any opportunities, I know. There was discussion of, on a play, pride play, and there was quality, is not that, which is, I don't want to rehash that, but I've just. Wonder if there's something that we can show as a council, um, visually to our residents.
Thank you, Councilman Nuccio, uh, I will just say, I kind of would like to redouble the efforts, and I think I mentioned it a couple of emails, and I could let Brian know that I think you should. Have a dedicated statement, similar to one on heart one against raises in support of the L G B T Q plus community. Um, I, I mentioned, I think, the last meeting, I tried and draft something and share it with the rest of the councils, I'm quite finalized it, I'm working on it right now, but. If I were willing to share with the rest of the council, it might be worth having that posted alongside that statement against raises, and I think that's a partial show of solidarity, but. I think we should continue the conversations and see where we can move forward in really promoting pride through our town services and programs. Um, in addition to what we've done so far with the green, so.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I would just, I mean, I have not been on social media, so it's not something that I haven't, I haven't cared about or anything like that. But it's, uh, it's something that, uh, I've seen everybody else on there, and I think that I would be remiss if I didn't say something where. Over the past two years, I've been very vocal while calling out things that I feel are wrong, especially when it's, uh, taken as an opportunity. To silence people, silence debate, and so, uh, I just want to, you know, again, reiterate what everyone has already been saying. That, uh, you know, I completely and unequivocally denounce any form of violence, any form of destruction, lawlessness or harassment. Particularly when it comes in aimed at a silence opposing views or, uh, of our residents. Uh, over the past two terms, that consistently spoken out against any actions, there aims puzzled contrary opinions or stifled open discussion. On any importance issue, and any important issues in any forum, including instances where individual talent residents, businesses were targeted for harassment. Responding certain conservative views, as well as the manner which protests and, uh, riots were essentially condoned under the name of social justice. I spoke out about those on prior meetings, I'm speaking out about what's going on here in town right now. That this is something where I could stand against these actions and wholeheartedly condemn destruction of the, of the private property, like the sixty-eight. The actions aimed against our democratic, Democrat town committee and the L G B T Q community in talent. There's no place for such hateful and, uh, hateful actions and vile acts designed solely to separate our community. These are actions that are not talent, I ask anyone, and as we put out before, anyone who has any information related to the most recent act of destruction. To contact our resident state trooper's office, they're the ones that should be addressing this, they are addressing it, and that, that we hope that the people that did this. Are brought to justice properly, and this is going out to those who have done this, those who have the gall to undertake these acts. Hope, uh, in the hopes of dividing or silencing our community, I've got one message, as you can see here, you've failed. You failed miserably, if anything, you have strengthened our unity and support, hatred in any form has no place in our town or our community. We've proven that, we will stand by that. You have failed, and we will succeed, thank you.
Any other communications or petitions from council members? Seeing none, we'll go to public participation, uh, on any subject from the jurisdiction to the town council with a three-minute limit.
I think we're the only ones, huh?
If there's any town staff that would like to jump over and go out and issue in town.
There are, I'll just like stop talking.
I know, they're ready to go home.
Really?
Dedication, they're all still there.
Alright, sixteen, or intermediate motion for a third at nine oh seven.
Okay.
We made a motion, uh, because I did it, any discussion? The none, all of them in favor, sign my by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, you're adjourned, have a great day, everyone.